Hey, Susan. Good evening and welcome to the August 2nd, 2023 Calaveras Transit Authority Board Meeting. We're gonna start with the CTA and then move on to the COG. So with that, if everybody could please stand for the pledge.
Alvin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the people, to the citizens, to our God, to the goodness of the earth.
Before we get to consent, I want to welcome the newest staff member of CTA and the COG, and Dela Loto. She came from the county, veteran of the Bay. And so, Boyd, and then the board.
Where did he work before?
He's a good listener.
We forgot your mic. Yep. Well, welcome. Okay, we will move on to consent agenda. So we have multiple items on the consent. Are there any board members that wish to pull a consent agenda item? Okay. Minutes.
I apologize, I need to pull item number two. So the meeting minutes.
Are there any other board members that wish to pull? None? Are there any staff members?
No.
Are there any public comments? Okay. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the abstain of moncada on consent agenda item number two?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alvin, second by Gay. All in favor? I pass this 7-0. Dash one on item two. Okay. Next, we have the regular agenda items. First is public comment. There's five minutes per person. Comments shall be limited to items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council and not posted on the agenda. Are there any public comments for items not on the agenda? Are there any online? Nope. Okay. We see no public comment. We'll move on to item number seven, which is the minute order approving fiscal year 23, 24 Operation Budget Amendment Number One. Executive Director, Rajo.
Thank you, Chair Fallendorf. Staff is requesting an amendment to the operations budget. This amendment totals $141,707. If you'd like to look at the chart on page 74, the majority of this amendment is $130,000. This is for the purchase of three acres on Airport Way. We have plans to build a new transit facility and a COG office. This funding will come from local transportation funding. It's identified as the line item is 4468 LTF. The other portion of this increase is $11,707. This is for maintenance. As we're getting to the end of the useful life, as you are aware, we've had delays in getting our new buses. And as we, you know, take these buses further on past their useful life, we're going to have maintenance issues. We did. We had to replace the injectors. So the $11,000 is for that. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions from the board? Okay. I just double checking because lights on. I just want to make sure I'm not missing anyone. Okay. If there's no question from the board, are there any public comments? Seeing none in the room, are there any online? Okay. We'll bring it back to the board. Is there a motion to approve this agenda item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Tim, second by Justin. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass this 7-0. Thank you. Next, we have item number eight. Cynthia, you're up. Para Transit Service Operations Contract Report.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair and Board. Cynthia Lawrence, Calaveras Connect Para Transit Services. So just a few little updates. For fixed route, looks like our numbers went down a little bit, but our dial-a-ride is up. So people are getting the word and using dial-a-ride more often. Saturday Hopper is a little stagnant. We were up a little bit more last month, but I think we got some events coming up. So that's gonna really fuel that ridership. Our recruitment, we have been continually recruiting for drivers. We're short some drivers. I've hired a few and they've left and then interviewed. So it's been a challenge. So if you know anybody, please send them my way. We are on Indeed. We also go through the merchant mercantile or mercantile merchant. And then I do some bulletin boards to try and get that going. Now we'll go to the EV. So on the 21st, the EV had a major breakdown. After some conversations with the tech, it was determined that there's a possibility that the batteries weren't cooling. And also, there's an additional issue with an inverter. And the inverter, apparently it's a DCAC kind of thing. It converts. And so they think that it's all connected. And so basically what it would do is just completely stop. It wouldn't turn off, but it would just stop moving forward. They think that there's wiring. They're not sure, but after a lot of conversations with the techs and stuff, they finally got someone out. They arrived today in town and they will be coming to the office tomorrow. So I should know more about what's going on and what the repair's gonna look like and how long it'll be down. But before that happened, we have over 2,000 miles on it and we were really using it for dial-a-ride. It was very helpful, especially for some of our larger groups. So we hope to get that back going.
How many miles did you say we're on?
A little over 2,000.
2,000?
Yeah. Yeah. And then, as you know, we had some repairs done. So Melissa spoke to that. So we got those buses back, so that's good news. So that's all I have. Any questions?
The driver positions, is that a Class A required?
No, Class B.
Oh, okay.
Actually, it can actually be a Class C CDL. So if they have it, it's great. If not, we train.
Okay.
So, yeah. All right? Anything else? Thank you. And thank you again. Thanks for letting me go first.
We'll move on to item nine, which is staff reports. Are there any staff reports?
No, nothing to report.
Okay.
No? And you don't have anything to say at the first meeting?
Not yet.
Okay. So with that, we're adjoint. You good? Okay. Okay, we'll join CTA and we'll see everyone back on September 6th for the CTA and we'll move over to the COG. And do you need a couple of minutes to transition? Okay.
Sorry, that is chair.
Oh, no, it's fine. I didn't hear Aaron.
Sorry, not sorry.
I'm ready.
Okay, good. Hold on, I gotta do something real fast. Okay. All good. Okay. We're now at the Council of Governments for August 2nd, 2023. At this time, we will dive into the consent agenda. So are there any items on the consent agenda that the board members wish to pull? Minutes? Okay. So minute for item number two, are there any other items the board wishes to pull? Staff? None? Are there any public comments on the consent agenda? Are there any online?
No.
Okay. So seeing none to create less confusion for Aaron, we'll take three through seven in one motion and then we'll come back for two. So is there a motion to approve three through seven?
So moved.
Moved by Alvin, is there a second? Second by Justin, all in favor?
Aye.
7-0. Is there a motion to approve item number two, the minutes from June 7th, 2023?
So moved.
Moved by Alvin, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pat, all in favor?
Aye.
With one abstain, so 6-0-1. We'll move on to the regular agenda. First up is public comment. Are there any public comments for any item not on the agenda? Seeing none in the room, are there any online?
No, there is not.
Okay. So based off of the request from staff, if it is okay with the board, we're going to move item 12 and 13 up. Is that okay? Are there any objections? None? Okay. So with that, we will start with the Caltrans report. I did not pay attention to June. Is Marlon on?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, Marlon.
Yeah. He's still muted, though.
Madam Chair, apologies, I'm just, I'm trying to get my camera on, so bear with me for a second here.
No worries, we swept it up on ya.
Yeah. I can't even move my browser for a second. Anyhow, I'm going, wait, I think I got it here.
There he is.
Okay. All right. Hey, Madam Chair, Madam Director, Board Members, thank you for the time as always. Hope you can hear me. But I'd like to just give a quick update for the board. What I'd like to start with is our major statewide initiatives. And right now, we are celebrating our 15th anniversary of the Department of Transportation. As you probably remember, or maybe not remember, but I've heard it, we used to be called the Division of Highways. And prior to that, we were the Bureau of Highways as well. So we've gone through several iterations, but we have 50 years, basically, as Caltrans since 1973, Caltrans is organized. So I just wanted to share, we've evolved over the years and we've moved on from the ribbon vehicular-centric organization to a people-first organization. We are now guided by our four foundational principles. I'm sure our Director, Aga, has mentioned this, but our four foundational principles are safety, equity, climate action, and economic prosperity. And this is part of us rebuilding our state's transportation system to provide multimodal transportation options to everyone, to connect rather than divide our neighborhoods, and also to ensure that no one is ever left behind. So as part of this celebration, we did create a new logo and branding to commemorate the last 50 years. So, and we also have a Caltrans history page. So just wanted to share that. That is on our Caltrans website, if you'd like to take a look at that. And it just shows the path that we've taken from the past. 1895 is when we began our Bureau of Highways to today. So if you'd like further information, that history is on our Caltrans website. But now I'd like to share with you guys some funding opportunities, starting with the Protect program. I probably mentioned this at last month's meeting, but we do have a Protect call for applications. This is from Federal Highway Administration and there's $848 million available for this program. It's to strengthen and plan for surface transportation to be more resilient to natural hazards, including climate change, sea level rise, flooding, extreme weather events, and other natural disasters. So public agencies, states, metropolitan planning organizations, local governments, regional governments, and also tribal agencies, travel planners are eligible to apply. All of this information's on the federal website, which is www.grants.gov. And again, I'm happy to share any additional information that you'd like on this program. And just as an aside, we do have two other programs that we're tracking lately. The Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Program. I know there are several smaller airports in Calaveras that may be interested, but there's $2.5 million available for this program for airport development planning activities. So I just wanted to share that. We do have that information on our website as well. And lastly, we do have our Rural Surface Transportation Grant Program. And that is from the Federal Department, USDOT. And so that information is on grants.gov. $675 million available for Rural Surface Transportation Planning Grant Program. And the deadline is August 21st. So basically, 19 days from now. So if you're interested, have any questions, thoughts, feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to show this information. Lastly, just as always, just want to thank Madam Director and her team for the coordination as always on the overall program. Always, we look to receive the requests for reimbursements in a timely manner. And we're currently awaiting DPA for quarter four. So with that, also congratulations on completion of the evacuation grant. And I know that's also on the agenda. So just wanted to congratulate the Director on that. The local traffic advisories, there are some maintenance, road surface maintenance work going on on Route 26. And this is gonna start actually next week, I think on Tuesday. But it's gonna be for two months. So most of the work is gonna be Sunday nights through Friday morning. So basically during the week, tonight, we're gonna complete this in October of 2023. So this is actually starting in San Joaquin County in Linden, but it's gonna go out to Oak Grove. And we are going to be having flaggers out there and real-time message signs on 26 in San Joaquin and Calaveras to the motors of the construction zones. This is both eastbound and westbound 26. You will see some nighttime work going on. And on Route 49, we do have some work going on. This is short term, but it's a one-way traffic control. It's gonna be between Vine Deck Lane and South Fork, Montgomery River. And this is bridge work, but it will be finished on, actually, it will be finished on Friday. So just be aware that work will be happening on 49 for about two days. So that concludes my updates. I'm happy to take any questions, comments, concerns. Thank you for the time, Madam Chair.
Tim.
Marlon, this is Tim. I wanted to thank you for reaching out to Melissa after the last meeting and letting us know that the pass was being opened. Much appreciated.
You're welcome, no problem.
Gay.
Hi, Marlon. How are you tonight?
Good, good.
Thank you. Hey, I want to thank you very much for the four-way stop sign on Person Road and Highway 12. Thank you for listening and you and Dennis and your staff in doing the work that was necessary to have the information to put that in there. So thank you very much. And I've got nothing but good remarks from it, especially the people that live there with the number of accidents that happened there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
And any other board question? None? Staff? No? Okay. Thank you, Marlon. As always, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you, I appreciate the time.
So we'll move on to county and city reports. Robert?
Good evening. Good afternoon. You may have seen some of the press releases or at least some of the activity going on, but the heavy work is starting on wagon trail. The Native American cultural work has been, I can't say it's completed because they still need to do monitoring and so forth, but they're pretty much out of their way with the resources and the resources and the features that were in the way have been recovered, relocated, so forth. So now the contractor has a fair amount of area to work. One area that they will not be able to work this year, but they will be working on next year, is the wall that's going to be built by Nassau Creek. So aside from that, they have a pretty large area to be working in. That's progressing. Phase two is progressing also. The permission to enter letters are being prepared. I believe they'll be sending those out shortly to the landowners. One of the things that we are trying to do the best that we can is make sure that the area is studied and reviewed so that we don't have the same types of problems with the cultural artifacts in the way of construction like we had for phase one. So that's phase two work. That's gonna be ongoing here. Marlon mentioned Protect Grant. We've been keeping an eye on that. And the design team is trying to get the county in a position to be able to submit the grant application, the next go-round with the Protect Grant, having good information regarding, at least some preliminary plans will be in place. So that is going on there. Last week, Melissa and I attended a Caltrans meeting. It was a partnership meeting and our quarterly partnership meeting. And there were many, many more things that were discussed more than Marlon brought up, but let me bring up a couple of them. They're working on that Highway 12, 26 little portion in front of the shopping center. They have plans of eventually putting the stoplight or a signal in that intersection.
Is that not further down, though, in front of Marvell?
Yeah, in front of Marvell.
So it's not at that intersection? It's in front of Marvell and the fire station.
Correct. That's correct. And one of the interesting things that they mentioned as far as that project is concerned is with the crosswalks, they're gonna try to do additional lighting so that they, and they're also doing something with the timing so that...
So the fire station can have access when there's an emergency. And the crosswalk situation is for the mobile home park across the street there. The people are having trouble trying to cross when they're trying to walk there back and forth. So, yeah.
So we'll see. That one, my understanding is that they're working on that as we speak. You know, they're getting that going. During that meeting, I took the opportunity to ask the safety folks there to take a look at that Double Springs yield the way it is. That whole stretch there is within Caltrans right-of-way. And I wanted them to see if maybe we could get that changed to a stop and start helping that situation on Double Springs. So those are the things. There's quite a bit more going on, but...
You, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, you're talking about the yield sign?
Yes.
Changing that to a stop sign instead of the yield that it is?
Right. I told them that it's really difficult to get across from Double Springs. You almost have to be looking backwards. And that's, the cars are coming along pretty fast, so it makes it hard to navigate that little intersection. So that's what I wanted to report. Are there any questions?
Any que, Gay?
You mentioned the wall and not being able to start on the wall until next year. Is there a timeframe, a length of time that we have set to construct that wall? Is it 30 days, 60 days, 90 days? Is it gonna withhold construction from that point going towards Caltrans Bridge that they're gonna be putting in?
The way that they're going to be operating and moving earthwork, they're going to be working on either side of where that wall is going to be built. They're going to build some sections up, some fill areas, but they will be working towards Apollusa, towards the bridge.
Correct.
And they will also be working towards pool station. And they have their, how do I say it? Their route for moving dirt and their haul routes and all that kind of stuff. The last thing that will be left is just that middle section where the wall's gonna be built next year. Constraints there, of course, permitting, when the permit allows us to get into that creek area and so forth. But that...
Do we have a length of time, you know?
Of how many days it should take us to build the wall?
Correct.
I don't have that right now, but I can get that for you.
Next meeting, can you give us that information? I'd like to know how long it's gonna take, because that's a critical point. I know we can work on either side of it, but it's gonna be a critical point of completing and then going into phase two because of where it's stationed and where the bridge work, Caltrans, go ahead on. So, yeah.
I'll tell you how many days it'll take to build the wall.
All right.
Okay. You're welcome.
Are there any other board questions? Okay. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
And City of Angels, Rebecca, you're up. Where is she at?
Madam Chair.
Huh?
Did you say Rebecca?
Yeah.
Can we start with Aaron?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, Rebecca's not here.
You're on city, you're on city-county report.
She's not, she's here for the evacuation.
I know, but the city is Rebecca Collins here for the city report.
I thought you were talking about Rebecca.
No. No. I don't see her on.
That's, I'm sorry. I know, I should have been Rebecca Collins for the city report. Sorry. I knew that, yes. Okay. So no city report. Okay. With that?
We're concentrating on the park.
Mike?
Mike. Texas, we've been concentrating on the park and getting that cleaned up. Ghost Canyon looks pretty amazing. The light in your mind, you can see it right now. There's the foundations that were out there for supporting some of the structures that were there. So moving on to the next phases of that. So that's kind of what we've really been concentrating on and cleaning up after all the storms and stuff. Yeah. Oh. I do have one more thing. August 19th is the Caltrans cleanup, I believe, at the Fairgrounds from 8:00 to noon. Appliances, tires without rims. I forget, it's on the city webpage also.
Okay. And we will move back up.
I can put on my City of Angels camp hat and say, City Angels Camp is finally able to start their citywide striping and resigning project. They finally got the Caltrans authorization for that.
Awesome.
And we approved signage last night also. Yes, that was a good one. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion, everyone. I was thinking, yeah. Anyways, okay, we'll jump back up to the agenda item number nine, which is the draft Calaveras County evacuation and access need assessment and preparedness plan presentation. So I will start with Ann and then we will go to Rebecca.
Good.
Hey, Ann, you're up.
So the board awarded a contract for the evacuation needs assessment and preparedness plan in December of '21, and work began in January of '22. Tonight, we have a presentation of the draft evacuation access needs assessment and preparedness plan by Duberry Engineers. Rebecca Nealan will be here. The county and city have both reviewed and provided comments on this draft plan. And both the city and county are supportive of COG staff moving forward to pursue grant funding for a Calaveras County evacuation plan. And with that... Um, and with that being said, I want to choose Rebecca. Neeland of Duberry Engineers.
Thank you, Erin, and thank you all for the opportunity to kinda introduce you to the plan um before it gets released for public circulation and anybody has comments. The first thing I'm gonna say is I've tried to come up with a better title. Um, it's sort of impossible. Uh, the title is very appropriate for what it is. It is not an evacuation plan, it's an evacuation needs assessment. So, we're trying to figure out the uh uh how, how the transportation facilities, you know, what are the hazards that would limit evacuation? So, it's a first step in an evacuation plan. Oh, and I have the power here. There we go. Okay, so we started with the project advisory committee and you can see there's a, a very large number of groups throughout the county um and these members would receive regular updates as components of the plan were ready for draft review and comment and we had uh several meetings with this team. Whoops. Alright, so the basic elements of the plan is we wanted to know where are hazards that would prevent evacuation? Uh, we really wanted to understand the roads that people are using, what are the routes everybody's taking to get out of the county? Uh, where are flood hazards? Man, I'm really glad I know these slides because I can't really read it from here. Uh, huh? Oh, I have it here, I can flip it, but uh, thank you, Erin. Um, just create a forum for stakeholder collaboration, get all of these groups talking and get the community thinking about it. Alright, so the things that we found are there really are limited sort of universal evacuation plans for the county. We found several small uh evacuation plans. Um, they're not really well available to the community to review. Um, while there is a good county notification system, only about fifty percent of the residents are using it. There's a lot of platforms that they're using um for, to get emerg- get information about emergencies. And uh really, residents are unaware of where to go to get information, what are the resources that are available? Okay. Oh, good that I have slides. So, what we accomplished, one thing I thought was, I didn't expect this at the beginning, but we developed hazard planning zones, because you have areas like Highway forty-nine, which is a, has a wonderful evacuation route in it. And then you have Sheep Ranch, Mountain Ranch, they don't have wonderful evacuation routes. And so, had a hand, we divided the county up into, I think it was five or six zones and each of those zones will be uh, needs to have a different consideration in an evacuation plan. Um, so you'll see those zones outlined in the report, how many residents, um, how many miles of road they have. So, just kind of understanding the different zones and those need to be treated differently as we move forward with an evacuation plan. We started to initiate community discussions about evacuation needs. You know, I live in a very similar area and it's very easy to go, I'll think about that later. It's not happening right now, you know, if a big fire happened, then everybody starts to think about it. So, it's good to get conversations going and forcing people to kinda start to think about it. And we quantified the risk levels for the infrastructure and that means bridges and roads. Um, and as well as the communities, what are the risk levels of the various communities? We identified the priority roadways that residents are currently using when they leave the county. Um, and we provided some recommendations for infrastructure improvements. So, the real purpose of this plan is uh, there's a few multiple things going on, but determine the infrastructure and community risk levels, identify projects to improve transportation resiliency and pursue grants and prioritize funding. So, we get, a lot of initial comments are, well, this doesn't really talk about evacuations. And these really are the three purposes of this plan. This plan is needed for, you know, Caltrans mentioned that protect program. This plan is needed to apply to that program. So, there's a lot of funding that's available, you need this plan to uh begin those applications. So, one thing I wanted to mention is while the highways are the obvious, everybody uses the highways to get around, there are a lot of county roads, county and city roads that residents are using um to bypass the highways or to get to the highways and so those local roads um get as much attention as the highways in this plan. Alright, so to put the plan together, there was really two inputs. The first one is the calculation of risk methodology. Um, and risk is really a function of vulnerability and criticality. And vulnerability is a function of exposure and sensitivity. And while I under, I understand those words individually, to explain them is a little bit difficult. So, on the slide, there's some examples of what exposure is and what sensitivity is, as well as what criticality is. So, all those pieces go together um to assess the risk level of infrastructure and communities. And then the second input is the community involvement. You know, the project advisory committee we had, we had a lot of community outreach in getting all of their um uh comments and thoughts on what the priorities are and what the hazards are. So, we had um, as I said, the project advisory committee. We had two interactive online surveys. I love the graphic on the upper right-hand side because the survey had a, a map function. We had, we did the survey twice um with the same map and we allow residents or survey takers to drop pins on the map to tell us where they think certain hazards are. And this is an example of one of the surveys and you can see we got pins all over the map. Um, between the two surveys, we had three hundred and forty-two residents and first responder comments and we had seven hundred and fifty-four locations of concern identified on just the two maps. So, pretty effective outreach. We had two community meetings, one online and one in person. Um, and then, you know, I love farmers markets, we had a farmer's market informational booth. One of them, we had a QR code to the survey, so we're handing out um, getting people to take that survey. We also helped the COG to get a Nextdoor account, um, which we could post the survey onto Nextdoor and it goes to lots of communities. Um, and we've had tremendous response using that Nextdoor um outreach. I forget how many, oh, we had all the survey takers, um, you know, three hundred and forty-two surveys. It'd be unheard of to have a community meeting where we had seven hundred and forty-two participants. So, pretty phenomenal uh way to, to get out to the community. Alright, so here's, without getting into too much detail, here's a couple examples of graphics that you'll find in the reports. We have the risk level of the roads, um, and some roads have higher risks than others, as well as the communities. You can see that bright purple in the middle and that would be the Sheep Ranch area, a very high-risk community for a number of factors. And then we have bridges and they're all evaluated for a risk level as well. Alright. So, out of that, this report, and this is just one um example from the report, there's a lot more information in the reports, but this is one of the sets of project recommendations. And each of these diamonds is an area that uh needs defensible space clearing on either, the green are on the highways and the yellow are on the county roads. Kind of the purpose of this, that FEMA money that we keep hearing about, the hazard mitigation program money, it needs to know specific areas, square footage, you know, it needs this kind of level of detail to be able to go apply for those funds. Also, by putting all of these projects into the report, whenever a project pops up, you can go to the report and say, oh, yes, and it's number thirty-six on the, the um needs assessment plan. So, it's already identified in a plan. It helps to bolster the argument for, for funding that project. Oh, and you can see all the numbers of projects that are listed on the side. This is one thing we're hoping to get with community comment, is any projects that we might have missed is to get those added into this report. Alright, so we listed tons of projects and we drilled down and created, actually it's for six focus projects. Um, so the first page is wagon trail that we all know and love. Um, the graphic on the side showed the percentages of residents that are using each roadway to leave the county. You can see twenty-five percent of the residents are using Highway four to exit the county, whereas twenty-seven percent are using twenty-six to exit the county. And then the percentages on the other legs. Um, and it has already been commented that the Angels Camp um headed east, southeast um is showing as a five percent. We know that that road has an enormous amount of traffic on, traffic on it, but the actual, the traffic that is residents leaving the county is that five percent. Lots of traffic moving through the county every day for lots of purposes. But as far as residents leaving, um, they, only five percent are choosing to go that way. The, the rest are using the other routes. Are we okay? See eyebrows? Okay.
There's reasons for that five percent going that way though, so.
Okay.
Versus going down four, twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
We've had some conversations about.
Okay.
Some bridges, some bridges that are over there, yeah, so anyway.
Okay. Yeah.
The percentages, that's normal traffic, not evacuation traffic?
It's uh, so you don't ever know exactly where the fire's gonna come from. So, to try and set up a traffic scenario model where, where are people going for evacuation? But I know if I was gonna evacuate, I would take the roads that I take normally. I would go east or west, which...
But this is just normal, daily people leaving the county and which routes are using to leave the county?
Precisely, precisely. And it was interesting, when you run the model, if you're, if you leave the county by five miles or if you leave the county by sixty miles, the routes change. So, if you have residents taking longer dis- longer distance trips to leave the county, Highway four is the clear priority road. But when you shorten that um to ten miles out of the county, the numbers start to spread out a little bit. It was really interesting exercise. But for sure, those two are the main, main roads for people leaving. And then the fact sheet on the right-hand side is an example of the fact sheets we created for the six projects that we identified. So, you'll see six of these fact sheets in the reports. And the projects that are on those fact sheets, wagon trail right at the top, and these are in no particular order. Um, the next project is shoulder widening on Highway forty-nine between basically San Andreas and Angels Camp. It was amazing how much traffic comes down and uses that piece of road to get other roads. It really is kinda the only middle connection through the county. So, that piece of road is used by anybody, more or less, leaving the county. Very large traffic volume on it. So, the purpose of that project was just to widen the shoulder. There's some locations where you get to the stripe and then the road ends and you've got a, a steep slope. So, that project would just be to put a sufficient shoulder on the side of the road so if a vehicle were to break down, it wouldn't block the entire roadway. The next project is the Foundry Lane, Greenhorn Creek Road Extension. Foundry Lane um is coming off Highway four and would go up and connect to Highway forty-nine just below Capello. And then the Greenhorn Creek Extension was discussed and at the time, you know, fire evacuation wasn't as big of a concern as, as it is now. Um, but it is obviously becoming more, much more of a concern. So, this would take Greenhorn Key Creek Road across Finnegan, past the sewer plant and connect to um Highway forty-nine. So, it'd essentially be a little bypass of forty-nine for Angels Camp. Um, the next project would be defensible space clearing on Highway four between Arnold and Murphy's. Uh, there's lots of defensible space clearing that needs to happen in the county, but that piece has an enormous amount of traffic that needs to, that, that's their only option to exit the county is to go down Highway four. So, that's why that was a priority. And then next two are related to uh more sort of planning type work, but having a unified notification system. And then the community outreach that's needed to make sure that the community understands this is your go-to notification system. And then the last one would be a county-wide evacuation plan. And again, community outreach to help all residents understand, this is your plan, here's the information um that you need. Alright, whoops, skipped my slide. There we go. Okay, so the plan is ready for um being posted to the community. Um, the plan will be available on the project website, calaverasready.com. I just checked it, just this month alone, it's had about four hundred and seventy hits to the site. Obviously, they're not all residents looking for things related to the plan, but it's interesting to know that the site is getting a lot of web traffic. Um, and the whole, the plan is there. There's a number of attachments to the plan, technical studies that support it. Those are all available as well on the website and a wonderful comment box where people can enter comments. Comments can be provided through the website and notices will be published in local newspapers, on social media, Nextdoor and Facebook, um emailed to all participants of the program, of the plan to date and um posted on city and county websites. Alright, and with that, does anyone have any questions about the plan?
Him, Dustin, you have your light on, no?
No, she answered the question, yeah.
Okay, I know gay guys, so we'll jump to gay.
It's okay.
Um, I, I, I have a lot of comments on this and, and I think over the course of the past winter, um, it exposed a lot of things in the lower part of the county that needed attention. Um, and routes getting in and out of areas such as Lock and Tenda and Rancho, Calaveras. Many people were having to go all the way down Burson Road and cutting over Olive Orchard Road just to get home. They were cut off several times on, by Evinth Road on Highway twelve and then um down by the golf course and even um Double Spring, not Double Spring, Cosco Creek uh on the highway was this close to going over by Zippy Mart. So, I think there's a bunch of exposures there that aren't reflected in here for emergency evacuations because there were emergency evacuations twice in the Mobile Home Park there and this uh, the, the uh Valley Springs proper was on the verge of being told to evacuate too at certain time. But it reflects low on all of these pages that I see is that zoning is low and, but I think it exposed some of the things that weren't, when this was being prepared, wasn't shown that could happen there. Um, so I think that needs to be reflected here and I think some of the routes that, you're showing major highway routes, which I don't disagree with you, but at a time of evacuation and people are trying to get out, they're looking for the shortest distance, especially if they live here and they know the other roads versus those highways to get out of there or even get to that highway because those are gonna be packed. Um, and they're two-lane highways.
Yep.
All through here. I think widening is correct, I think that's gonna help at some point. Um, at least getting around things that, at least trying to get the traffic low. Even, you know, um, having fire department or the sheriff's office or CHP out there maybe directing that two-lane highway, both lanes going one way to get out. But there's a lot of things in here that I have commented, I will put in comment on. It has to do with the lower end of the county. Again, while this was being prepared, the exposure down there was not reflected or was being even thought about at the time. Um, so...
Did you see the exhibit that had everywhere that the hundred-year FEMA hundred-year flood plane crossed a road?
Yes.
You saw that map?
Yeah.
And these are the sites that you're mentioning, you were mentioning?
In twenty, less than twenty, like two thousand and six and then this year in twenty twenty-three, so it's like seventeen-year span. But it doesn't mean, coming with climate change, as they say, that in the coming years, we may see even more higher flooding down there that we really need to reflect in here. And I think uh FEMA's hundred-year plan is going to be changing here relatively soon based on some of the information that they received in all of the flooding in California over the course of the last year. So, but I think um some of it, I know we're trying to get this plan finalized and the funding out there.
We have time and, and I think we can meet with the new OES director with the county. Um, he's been very receptive, so I don't know if you wanna um send your comments through him or do you wanna send them to me and we can...
I, I will send them through you, so you're aware of, aware of them, since this is planned from COG and then you can share the information with Tim. The other thing is, given the fact that we did have the extensive rain and we don't know how it's gonna happen, I know we went through drought period, you don't know what's gonna happen in the future. There's an extensive amount of fire hazard out there right now. Um, and there, I experienced a fire going through that area down there, Burson area and through there and there were a bunch of evacuations going on there and people didn't know, at that time, didn't know what to do, where to go. I think that was like two thousand and seven or something like that. Um, but the fire hazards, if you drive through that area, and I do every day, um are extensive um due to the fact of the high amount of rain. And being able to have the evacuation routes, someone can look on or even um get notification on their cars. Now we have computers in cars and it shows routes that you can go and do. I think it's very critical that that's in this plan.
I agree.
For people down there.
I agree.
Okay?
Definitely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other board members that have any comment? None? Okay. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, to Gay's point about the fires, um, I noticed that Parrot's Ferry was not highlighted very well on the map.
Oh, Parrot's Ferry?
The Parrot's Ferry, bridge or road. Um, and then... And then the same thing with the flooding down, especially in my district with copper, bridge washouts, using alternative routes. And I don't think at the time when we were collecting, we had that information. So if there's a way to get the lower county, just like Gay was talking about Burson and Valley Springs, the same for that area. I think even Hunt Road, Milton flooded. But capture that into it as well. The other question I had is we showed the volume of cars going out, but did we, was there any study on the volume of cars coming in? So for example, we had the Aurora Fire and the Washington Fire at the same time. That created a bottleneck, not only for Calaveras County, but Tooluma evacuation as well because Pitts Ferry, they closed Steveno. Steveno was only allowed to come into Calaveras County. Calaveras couldn't go the opposite because of the fire. Have we considered those like an incident within an incident issue with bridges and the other counties having to evacuate into all if we're having an emergency as well?
No, but the evacuation plan will have a very large traffic analysis component to it. This one was not a large traffic analysis study, but the evacuation plan absolutely, in multiple scenarios, will need to be run and evaluating what to do with those.
Okay, because I was just thinking of that five percent. I still think that five percent is pretty low.
It is.
But it's not reflecting Pitts Ferry, a lot of people coming down or jumping over Pitts Ferry and then on the low. But I was thinking the opposite direction too. A lot of people coming from Tooluma to Calaveras.
Yep, that wasn't long ago. There is a lot of commute traffic on Highway forty-nine, absolutely. It's a very important road.
And then were dam breaks considered in this as an emergency?
No, it was not.
Are you thinking of Utica? If there was a dam fit?
Oh, that was a Caltrans comment actually, is that they do dam breach scenarios a lot and said that they had all kinds of resources to run that analysis and that local training and could they be more of a partner in these types of plans? And I thought that was a wonderful idea because they do have a lot of resources. They get overlooked sometimes.
I was just thinking more of the hope, but if there's a way to bring in and recognize dam breaks in the county as well. Huh?
Like Hunter Ross Reservoir.
Yeah, Hunter Ross. But, but not just that, but if there, if there does break, where is the evacuation? You know, what is the radius of where the, because if you're in Arnold, you're not going to be coming down the hill because you're going to be going the opposite. So you're going to be taking Summit Road or you're going to be taking Sheep Ranch. That was more my thought. I know they have, you know, what the scale is, but where the road is going to, what road we're going to potentially take it out?
Well, if Monies was to fail, it would be very interesting to see what would happen downstream.
Yeah. Yeah. And then on page nine, the map that you put up of the county, is there any way to get that zoomed in a little bit more?
Zoomed in a little more?
Yeah, like to look at more.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. If I wanted to have a little red dot, page nine. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, there was no map.
Yes.
Yeah, so let's see.
They kind of, I want to see where some of these other little dots are.
Were these the bridges?
Uh, no, the dots were from the survey. One-way, in and out. Yeah. And that is hopefully larger in this plan. They are. So in the plan.
Yes, that one. Is there anyone who's in that?
Yeah.
That we can get a bigger clock? I don't know. Okay, thank you. Oh, that was all I had. Yeah, just make it bigger. Are there any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a complaint.
No.
I'm looking at the pictures that are provided in here.
In the presentation?
Yes, and not in your presentation, but in our packet.
Oh, the packet.
How come we have a picture of Follendorf's cattle on the one and then Amanda's pregnant heifer on the other one? And we don't have any pictures of district provided?
You know, we can fix that.
Do a chair, right?
Even that pregnant. They're good pictures.
He's joking.
I know, I know. I know.
Oh, there's a backstory on that one. Is there any other board questions for Rebecca? Your comment? Okay, I do need to open it up to public. So are there any public online?
No, there is not.
And she and none in the room? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, it was a good job. With that, we need to adopt it or are we just moving on until the next public?
We're just opening it up for comment for the next thirty days. I did want to thank Rebecca and her team. We had great intentions for the outreach, but I think some of you remember there were so many winter storms, we kept having to cancel the in-person. So her team shifted gears and got all the resources and technical support to do the online comments. And I think that really worked out in our favor and I think we got a lot more input. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Rebecca.
Okay, we'll move on to item ten then. Designation of a voting delegate on the California Association of Council of Government, CALCOG, governing council. I will turn it over to the executive director.
Thank you, Chair Follendorf. As you stated, we're requesting the council designate a voting delegate to represent COG on the California Association of Council of Governments. If the, if the council wishes to appoint someone, historically, it has been the chair. Through COVID, we haven't had a appointee participating. It was through COVID and everyone was really busy. So now they've contacted me. They haven't specified when the fall meeting will be or where it will be. So there's time if the council didn't want to take action today. But if they did and wanted to set that up and give authorization for compensation if the meeting happens in person, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Alvin? Gay?
Yeah, I, I think we can go forward. I'm willing to go forward with that, setting it up. But without a date, it's going to be very difficult for a lot of us to be able to even commit to something right now until we have a confirmed date on it. But to set it up and get the compensation thing and I'm open to that.
Okay, so you want to wait for appointing someone?
I, I would.
Okay.
Just unless anybody else does. I, I just think it's very difficult, I think, for city members and the county members to be able to.
It would just be one appointee. Yeah, one appointee. Usually it's been the chair, but I'll wait till they advertise the meeting and the date and location and I'll bring it back to the council.
Unless Amanda wants to.
No, I'm a little worried about it too because I'm looking at the calendar. There's Laco, OCIC, and CSAT. I know the city has the league.
Yeah.
And so I think it might be better. And then that way, if there's an opportunity for community member, you know, I think we all, there's a lot of things going on in a couple months. I think it would be better. Then that way, if we need to, we can do a second. If something happened, can we do that?
Yes, you can have an alternate.
One and then alternate?
Yes.
Okay.
No problem. I will bring that back to the council.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, well, next is item number eleven.
Do we all agree on that?
Yeah, I think there was a consensus. It was just, do you want to poll, Gay?
No, I just want to make sure everybody agreed to what we were talking about. When it is.
Okay, next is item number eleven, Regional Surface Transportation Program. Executive Director, Adro.
Thank you, Chair Follendorf. I wanted to bring this item forward, one, to give the council an update on our RSTP programming. And then second, get possible direction. First, I wanted to start approximately every four years, the COG facilitates a call for projects, making RSTP funding available. Staff identifies these estimates based on estimates of previous years. If you wanted to look on page two twenty-nine of the packet, the top chart is the two thousand and fourteen call for projects and the two thousand and seventeen call for projects. There's currently only four projects open. You've got the Murphy's Grade Road project that's still open, the county roadway sign reflectivity, the Valley Springs School, and the Angels SR forty-nine sidewalk fill. Those remaining balances total four sixty-nine. I've communicated with both city and county on those projects. I think too that the city will be closing, you know, within the next three months. The county is currently working on the Valley Springs School. The next chart identifies the RSTP programming that was just approved by the board in December. That funding totals eight hundred and ninety-two. We programmed seven hundred and twenty-eight to projects and then we left one sixty-four for contingencies or possible project overruns. I've, I've put up on the, sorry, screen right here. We currently have a fund balance in the RSTP fund of one point six million. We just received a new apportionment. This apportionment for twenty-two, twenty-three came in a lot higher than I anticipated. This is close to six hundred thousand dollars. Once I subtract the liabilities or obligations, you know, our reserve fund, the remaining balance on that call, the new call for projects, the one sixty-four, and then I took out annually, two hundred thousand has been apportioned to COG. But I think that's why this remaining balance in the fund of five thirty-nine is so high. One is because of the interest that we've been accruing on this fund over the years. And COG doesn't always take the two hundred thousand. So we've been taking, you may remember last year, we took sixty-four thousand for that fiscal year. So this leaves a balance of five hundred and thirty-nine, nine twenty-two. In my staff report, I've included a couple of options. This is the council's discretion, a supplemental call for projects, a wagon trail realignment shortfall to contribute this funding to our regional project. We can put it in a reserve fund. I really wouldn't recommend that. That's a bad signal to the state. Here we go through a federal exchange to exchange federal dollars into state dollars to make it cleaning, cleaner and easier to spend. So I don't recommend putting it in a reserve. Or this would set a precedent, is a one-time distribution to the local jurisdictions that they could use for streets and roads maintenance. That would be distributed, distributed on a maintained miles methodology. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Tim had his hand up.
It's too many things in my head. If we allocate the funds to wagon trail, does that hurt us or does that send a message that this is serious to us when we really want?
There you go. You hit it on the head. That's exactly. We are a regional agency. It is your responsibility on this board to keep our regional projects moving forward. I think that would be a great signal. We all have been aware from the updates from the county. They couldn't control this overrun. It couldn't be forecasted. They're working really hard with Caltrans and the COG to close this gap. So that, that would be my recommendation. And thank you, Tim. That's perfect. Alvin?
I'm on board with what Tim just said one hundred percent. I think it's a, shows a good gesture and it's something that needs to happen in the county and get finished. And this, we have a little extra money to put at it and it benefits all of the county coming up now.
Gay?
You know where I'm at, wagon trail. One hundred percent, let's get it done.
Yes.
And any other comments from the board? No? Okay, I got to open it to public comment. Are there any public comments on this discussion? Not seeing any in the room? Are there any online?
No.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. So we do need a motion?
Well, I think it's just direction. What I will bring back to the board is the programming in, you know, in the funding charts that I usually bring in the staff report. So I wanted to get the direction, the input from the council. Now that I have that, I will bring the item back in September for your approval.
Okay, everybody good? Everyone not in their head? Okay? And then we've already completed twelve and thirteen. So we will jump to item number fourteen, which is council report. So I will start with Tim. Justin? Isabel?
Nothing to report.
Pat?
Nothing to report.
Gay? No? Okay, Alvin?
I need to add to the city report. Forgot about it. The environmental review is done for the Angels Creek Trail and the Hut facility. So that is on the webpage right now too. So that was also a big checkoff last night at the meeting. Sorry, I'm getting it all together here slowly. So, but yeah, that was a big thing last night too.
And I have nothing to report. So we'll go to staff. Erin?
I have nothing additional to report to the, and report I had in the packet.
Okay.
Good.
Erin? No. Melissa?
Yes. So staff is starting to work on our regional transportation improvement plan. This is due to Caltrans in December. It should be fairly easy because our number one project will be wagon trail. And you may remember, we've advanced our shares to the project. So this report will just be identifying our shares that we have advanced and highlight our project. The other thing I would like to report, staff along with county public work staff will be meeting with Caltrans District Ten, Caltrans Headquarters, and CTC staff on Monday afternoon to discuss issues that we're having with the wagon trail. So I hope in September, we have some good news to report. Yes.
Good.
And thank you guys all for your commitment to the.
Sorry, can I? According to Robert's report though, with the cultural artifact being kind of out of the way, unless we unearth something else again, that it should be a very good meeting going forward.
Definitely should be a very good meeting. And when he was saying we've spent so much time on these cultural issues, they've cleared the cultural for the next phase. So once we hit that phase, we'll be free and clear.
So there's no chance of.
We have minimized it as much as possible. Yeah, well, we give them the opportunity to go through and look for them. And so we have done that.
Correct, but you, but you never know. We unearthed a city with, that's why we're building the laws, you just never know. But, but yeah, but it looks like at least they've gone forward for the remainder of phase one. We're pretty much cleared out unless we unearth something tragically that we should be set up to go. And I think that's a good thing for CTC and Caltrans.
Yes.
All right, we have one last item. So before we go into closed session, we do need to go through a public comment. So we will be going into closed session for a public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven, title executive director in the conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section five four nine five seven point six. Agency designation representative, board chair, myself, and unrepresented employee, the executive director. So at this time, are there any public comments for the closed session item? So seeing none in the room, are there any online? And then Monica, I have a question. Can we close out the closed session and report out at the next meeting? Are you okay with that?
I'm just gonna close out at the next meeting, that's fine, that is an option under the brand.
Okay, so with that, we will give, um, we'll take a break to allow the room to clear and get ready for closed session.